Ready? Yeah. Good morning. So, it's Tuesday, February 11th, time is 9:30, and we're gonna go ahead and start our meeting this morning. Clerk to the Board, can you do the roll call?
Commissioner Malika.
Present.
Commissioner Hudson.
Here.
Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Odoricio.
Here.
Commissioner Baca.
Here.
You can please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we just need a motion to approve the agenda this morning.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second. That passes five to zero. So the next item on our agenda this morning is proclamation or presentations and awards. So this morning, we'll begin by reading and, we'll begin this morning by honoring Black History Month in Adams County. So Black History Month is an opportunity to honor the incredible contributions of the African Americans who have worked and sacrificed to make our country and our community a more inclusive, just, and excellent place to live for all people. It's a chance to spotlight the accomplishments of Black innovators and trailblazers and their influence on our society. From remarkable discoveries to visionary works of art, and from ground-shaking acts of courage to everyday acts of greatness from our neighbors. Importantly, this month also allows us to honor the many Black Americans who have served our country in the military and who have given their lives to protect this nation and its people. Their service and their sacrifices stand as a reminder of the Black community's deeply rooted patriotism and commitment to this country, even in the face of the painful and ever-present legacies of slavery, segregation, and racism. Black History Month is also about actively giving power and platform to voices that have historically been underrepresented, listening to what they have to say, and then taking into action to make things right. And importantly, Black History Month is about more than past or present oppression and struggle. It's about making space for cultural joy, pride, resilience, dignity, and hope. We know that Black History Month is not just about one month here in Adams County, because history continues to be made by the Black community every single day. So with that, I'd like to ask Commissioner Emma Pinter to read the proclamation.
Black History Month 2025. Whereas each year, the United States observes Black History Month, also known as African-American History Month, by celebrating the culture, heritage, and countless contributions by Blacks and African-Americans, and recognizing their central role in U.S. history. And whereas, the most current population of Adams County is approximately 3.5% Black African-American. And whereas, what began in 1926 as Negro History Week, under the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, was expanded by President Gerald Ford in 1976 to a month-long celebration officially recognized by Congress in 1986, with Black History Month now celebrated every February. Whereas this year's theme, African-Americans and Labor, explores how work, both paid and unpaid, has shaped the collective experience of Black people. It highlights the transformational impact of Black labor in agriculture, education, entrepreneurship, and organized movements. This name celebrates the profound contributions of Black workers throughout U.S. history and the diaspora. Whereas Blacks, African-Americans continue their rich history of significant and diverse contributions to cultural, educational, economic, and political vitality of Adams County. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners, the County of Adams, State of Colorado, does hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month, and encourages all residents to honor the rich diversity of the Black or African-American community, and celebrate the many ways they contribute to our nation and society. And this has been signed by all of us.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. So at this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium Shanice McGregor from the District Attorney's Office to come to the podium to speak. While you're making your way down, I would like to take a moment to recognize our Employee-Led Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Council, A-Proud, which is instrumental in the creation of this proclamation. The work of A-Proud here at Adams County is crucial and means so much to our staff and to all of us on the Board. So those of you in A-Proud, can you please stand at this time to be recognized? Thank you so much. Shanice?
Hello, everyone. My name is Shanice McGregor. I am employed here at Adams County, and it brings me great joy, honor, and pride that we are doing this proclamation today. I have some notes. So, Black history is not just American, uh, American history, it is world history. And so I appreciate us for really taking the time to really acknowledge that and to be in this space right now. In times where we're faced with changes happening every day, and in attempts to erase knowledge and power and pride, I am so honored and privileged to think about this proclamation and what it does for Adams County. Knowledge, acknowledging only the glorious history despite odds is not just enough. We should also be celebrating current achievements and distance traveled. So I am so happy that we're gonna continue this and continue to acknowledge community, culture, and contributions. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being here. Erica, do you have someone signed up for the proclamation today?
Chair, we do have Sunny Ward signed up to speak as well.
Sunny, if you please come down to the podium.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Board. Good morning, community members. My name is Sunny Ward, and I am the Chief Operating Officer for the District Attorney's Office here in Adams County. This county has been my employment home for almost four years now. And I stand before you today in deep appreciation as Adams County makes this Black History Month proclamation. This moment is more than ceremonial or performative in nature. It is a reaffirmation of the county's position on shared values of inclusion, respect, and belonging. U.S. Census Bureau data shows that Adams County is home to over 23,000 Black and African-American residents. While these Adams County residents may be represented in a smaller percentage, the contributions, culture, and voices of African-Americans, residents, and employees are an integral part of what makes this community strong. Yet, across the country, we see a troubling pattern. Diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts are overtly under attack. Policies aimed at uplifting marginalized communities are being dismantled. Attempts are being made to rewrite history, and the very concept of belonging is being politicized. So especially in times like these, proclamations like this matter. They serve as a declaration that we see one another, that my history is as valued as your history. And in fact, it underscores that history itself is not yours or mine, it's ours. Proclamations like this serve as a powerful reminder that African-American contributions, both to society and to Adams County, are valued, are recognized, and they won't be overlooked. More importantly, this proclamation sends a message to every Black person, every Black family, and every Black professional in Adams County that we matter, that we belong here, and that we're seen. I commend Adams County for its continued commitment to diversity, not just in words, but in action. Whether through community initiatives, equitable policies, or representation in leadership. This county continues to foster an environment where all people, regardless of race, feel heard and valued. So in closing, I ask that you let this proclamation not be the end, but a reminder of the work that still needs to be done. Let it encourage us to push back against division, to uplift Black voices, and to continue building a future where equity and justice are not just ideals, but realities. Thank you very much for your time and for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Sunny. So next item on our agenda is public comment. Erica, do we have anyone signed up for public comments?
Oh, um, Chair?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I just wasn't sure if anyone... Commissioner remarks.
Yes.
Is it okay? Raise my hand. Okay, cool. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to read the proclamation. And I really appreciate the comments that were made from Adams County staff and 17 judicial staff who highlighted the importance of this holiday. I think for me, it's a moment to pause and reflect. If you've ever been to DC to see the Martin Luther King Memorial, or, and I've toured with some of my colleagues on trips, the African-American History Museum, which is very powerful, and you should certainly set a day aside to spend time there. In Colorado, we have a number of notable luminaries that, in the Black community, that made national and national impact. The first Black African-American millionaire is Madam C.J. Walker. Made Denver her home, set up a standard of excellence in entrepreneurship in the early 1800s as part of the gold rush. Clara Brown is one of my favorites. If you haven't ever researched her history, she is truly a remarkable individual. She was a gold rush entrepreneur, made quite a name and fortune for herself, and became known as the Angel of the Rockies. And her story about collecting her family and serving others in community is truly powerful. And I just want to take a moment to honor Lake Colorado's unique role in a promise of freedom and liberty and safety and opportunity for all Americans, and that there's a lot of rich Black history for us to learn about our neighbors and learn about our community. And I just want to thank the Board for continuing to honor these moments and traditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners?
Appreciate it. Commissioner Hudson?
Thank you. Yes, thank you to Ms. Ward and Ms. McGregor for your wonderful comments. Thank you, Adams County, and the Board for supporting this proclamation. I really, your remarks really resonated with me. I think we have to remember that our actions today are tomorrow's history, and so we have to endeavor to keep active as the work of A-Proud does here in Adams County, so that every day we are renewing ourselves to these values of valuing and including every voice in our community. And I'm proud to be a part of an organization that is doing that, and a pledge to continue to do that in my work going forward here in Adams County with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Malika?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you so much, Ms. Ward and Ms. McGregor, for coming out here and sharing your words with us. And they're very inspiring, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that today. Thank you.
Commissioner Odoricio?
And I believe we're telling everyone not to leave yet, because after we're done with all this, we're gonna go down for a photo. But I, we always do with the proclamations. I will say that I think it's important for us to establish and clearly state that what we're talking about with inclusion, what we talk about with our commitment to diversity, this is part of our values as an organization. And the voters put the people up here, up here, based on democracy. They voted for us to establish what our values are very publicly and to stand up for those. People need to be seen, they need to be heard, they need to be appreciated. We need to also make sure that everyone is celebrated, but most importantly, protected. And I think that's where it's important, is you have a Board of Five that I'm very proud to sit up here with. And when people want to say that they think we need to change our values, no. That's what our voters in our community hired us to do. We're gonna stand with those, and I look forward to working with everyone on that. And I do appreciate us having these opportunities. And I want to thank the African-American Black community for all of their commitment and contributions to our community, to our state, and to our nation. So thank you all very much. And again, this Board, we're living, we're gonna continue to live by our values and stand up for those. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, if you can please join us in front for a picture. So A-Proud, the speakers today, and the Board. Okay, next item on our agenda is public comment. Erica, do you have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Those here for the land use hearing, we'll call on you later if there's anybody signed up for land use. Elected official communications. Anything else from the Board?
I have one more thing.
Yeah?
Apparently, you know, I have high verbal needs today, as our colleague Eva used to say. I have little notes, and sometimes, you know, despite being elected, especially I'll get nervous. So I'm so glad that we're celebrating Black History Month. And the other piece that I wanted to add is that in local government, I take seriously, and I know we all do, the legacy of systemic racism that's filtered down to land use in particular, and redlining, and how our nation had previously designed communities to exclude and protect on basis of race, ethnic origin, or immigration status. And I just think it's really powerful to me that we learn our history and learn the ongoing legacy of racist policies in our systems to be able to do better with our land use and with our, the way we administer our government, both on the local level and as we reflect up to the state and federal. So I'm just grateful for this opportunity and that our Board takes that seriously.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Next on the item on the agenda is a consent calendar. I just need a motion to approve consent calendar. So moved.
Second.
That passes five to zero. Now we're on to the county manager. Steve, do you have anything for us this morning?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. One item of new business. Public Works Director Brian Staley will be presenting the resolution approving the 2024 Colorado Department of Transportation Highway Users Tax Fund Report for Adams County. Thank you.
So, good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brian Staley, and I'm very proud to serve the Public Works Department. This is, this is a bit of business that is a rote task. We do it every year. But we put it on new business. Uh, but we put it on new business today because we spend time on the things that we value. Um, the Highway User Tax Fund to borrow from Eddie Izzard is the cutting edge of tax policy in the most extraordinarily boring sort of way. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, Beth Podleski, uh, who is, has project managed this task for the past five years running. Um, it is a count of the miles of roadway that we have in Adams County. Um, the state collects fees and taxes from fuel and road user fees, uh, and puts it all together across the state and gives us a piece of that fund. And just excuse me for one second, I've got a great slide, an infographic to show you just how this impacts our community.
Love good infographic.
And, and this is important because the Highway User Tax Fund represents about one-fifth of about fifty million dollars of our revenues projected this year. Um, and it's a, an important piece of a much larger tapestry of revenue sources that are so important to the work that the Public Works team does to serve the community every day. Um, so the Highway User Tax Fund alongside all of these other revenue streams, um, allows us to clear the roads and the snow that's falling today, uh, to maintain our gravel road network, to fill those potholes, to rebuild intersections, to, to do all of the work that our excellent team does out in the field. So I wanted to pull this off of your consent calendar, put some attention on it, and to thank you all for the support that you give our team, uh, throughout the year. So thank you for your time on this, and we recommend approval, uh, of this, again, very boring task, but very important task on behalf of our residents.
Thank you so much, Brian. Questions from the board? Commissioner Odoricio?
Um, that's question-ish, I guess, more of a statement. I want to thank Brian Staley for, for doing this. I think that there are a lot of times where we have things on our agenda that are business as usual, and some of it's kind of techno-speak and government speak and all that. Um, and the fact that you had the foresight and, and, and the perspective to kind of think like, every once in a while, we kind of need to put a flag in this and, and explain to the public, explain to ourselves, and remind, um, just kind of what some of these concepts are and how important they are. And I want to thank you because I do agree with you that this is important, not just Adams County, but it, we will also note that the context of, of this kind of reminders is also important because there are times already in the past where the legislature and others have wanted to either place conditions or kind of use these, uh, this funding as like a leverage or a tool, uh, to try to whittle away at some of our discretion that we have on use of these, um, funds. But we're open, we're honest, and we're transparent about how we use them, and I think we need to defend the use of that. And I just want to thank you because it gives us an opportunity, uh, to really bring up some of these concepts, not just with each other, but the public. And when they hear us talk about H U T F and other that, it's techno-speak, but really you hit home with the fact that this is important. And so I'm gonna thank you. And so, I mean, I'm gonna support it, obviously, but I, I really want to thank you for having that kind of perspective because I think it's, it's something I'm, I think we all can work on together. It's like, have a bigger picture of how important some of this stuff is. Who would want to know about this? So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Others? Nope. Okay, with that.
And with that, I would move to approve the resolution approving the 2024, uh, Colorado Department of Transportation Highway Users Tax Fund Report for Adams County.
Second.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Brian. Next up, we have the county attorney, Heidi.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, we have two executive sessions on your schedule today. Uh, the first of which, uh, will be presided by the deputy county attorney and outside counsel, and that is pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four six, four oh two, four B regarding legal advice on the COE's litigation.
Second.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, and then the second one is pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four six, four oh two, four B and E for the purpose of receiving legal advice and instructing negotiators regarding the intergovernmental agreements with Denver.
Move to approve.
Second.
We're catching up electronically.
One second. Yeah, we'll need to do a voice vote.
Sounds good.
Oh.
Actually, did it come up? Okay.
It did.
There it is. Thinking on it. One second.
It's coming. Waiting.
The computer is also feeling cold, the weather outside.
It's also feeling cold. It's a cold day.
It's a cold day.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, I?
Commissioner Malika?
Aye.
Commissioner Hudson?
Aye.
Commissioner Pinter?
Here. Oh, yes, sorry. That one's a yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Aye.
And you're here. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Erica. All right, does staff need a few minutes to prep for land use? Yes. Okay, we'll reconvene at ten AM. Okay, the time is ten AM. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene and, uh, start our land use hearings. So the land use hearing process is we'll have a staff presentation. They see they're making their way to the podium. It will then come back to the board for questions for staff. The applicant will have an opportunity to either do a presentation or comment on their project. Um, again, back to the board for questions. We'll have public comment. The applicant responsive requested, commissioner discussion, and then we'll have a motion at that time. So welcome. If you can just state your name for the record, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Marion with the Community and Economic Development Department. This morning, I will be presenting case, uh, PRC twenty-two-four dash six, Vegas Solar Energy Facility located in the southeast of, uh, southeast corner of East one hundred and twelve Avenue and Hank's Crossing Road. The applicant has formally requested a continuance of this case to work through access issues with subsurface owners on the subject site. Planning Commission has granted, uh, continuance for this case with the vote, uh, of seven to zero. Uh, and the continuance case in front of the Planning Commission will take place on April twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, at this time, staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners continue this case until the May thirteen, uh, twenty-twenty-five agenda. Thank you very much. Happy to take any questions.
No question.
Okay.
Go ahead, Steve.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Odoricio?
I'd be okay to make the motion, but I'd also wanna, I don't think it's gonna matter, but just in case anyone from the public came today to discuss the issue or to give feedback, uh, just to give courtesy to that, we could ask.
Are they hiding behind a chair somewhere?
Exactly. Um, but as a matter of course, we do that, and then after that, I'll, I'll be willing to make the motion for a continuance.
Okay, it doesn't appear, but I'm gonna ask anyone from the public here to talk about this particular land use case. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Odoricio, with that, uh.
Madam Chair, I move, uh,
Thank you.
Move to continue this case until May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Yes. Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the PRC twenty-two-four Gibbons Industrial Project.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Brian Marion. I am a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. This morning, I will be presenting case, PRC twenty-two-four dash eight, the Gibbons Industrial Project located at seventy-sixty-one East ninety-sixth Avenue. Their request in front of you this morning is a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use designation of approximately, um, twenty acres from agricultural small scale to industrial medium, and a zoning map amendment to change the zoning designation from agricultural one to industrial two. Um, the subject property is located in western Adams County, east of the city of Thornton, and west of Commerce City. This property previously housed a debris landfill. However, uh, the landfill is no longer in operation, and the property is currently vacant. The area surrounding the property consists of a mix of residential, agricultural, public, and industrial uses. Um, the properties directly south and east of the subject property are currently used for industrial purposes, while the western lots house the, uh, South Adams Water and Sanitation District wastewater treatment plant. The current zoning of the subject property, along with the properties located directly north and west, has an agricultural one zoning designation, and the properties to the east and south of the site are zone I two. Currently, the future land use of the subject property is agricultural small, and the comprehensive plan designates, uh, this category as the most appropriate for smaller agricultural operations that balance housing and agricultural productions on the site. As you can see from the site photos, the area surrounding the property is mostly, um, under, underdeveloped. However, commercial, industrial, and public uses along Interstate seventy-six characterize this area. Um, to better understand their request in front of you this morning, it's helpful to provide an overview of what the applicant is aiming to accomplish on this site. Currently, the applicant operates a crane rental, uh, business on the property directly south of the subject property. If the proposed entitlements for this, uh, for this property are approved, the applicant plans to move their operations to the subject property to expand their business. While the proposed development will require an additional entitlement in the form of a conditional use permit to bring the property into compliance, the applicant has provided a concept plan illustrating how the site will look once fully developed. Now, in considering a comprehensive plan amendment, it's important to note that, um, any request must be consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, as well as showing compatibility and, uh, consistency with land use, transportation, and open space maps in the comprehensive plan, and that, of course, advances the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and property owners of Adams County. Now, as I mentioned earlier, uh, the current land use of the subject property is agricultural small scale according to the, I don't, uh, Advancing Adams Comprehensive Plan. This land use, uh, typically accommodates A-one and A-two properties for residential and agricultural uses. The applicant is proposing an amendment to the comprehensive plan to industrial medium, uh, which will allow the site to develop in alignment with industrial one and industrial two zoning districts, making the site compatible, um, with the surrounding area. Now, this proposed amendment, uh, aligns with several strategies, uh, outlined in the Advancing Adams Comprehensive Plan, including encouraging the development of brownfields and infill, uh, parcels to promote their revitalization of neighborhoods and utilize existing infrastructure. As previously mentioned, uh, the site, uh, was used for gravel mining in the mid-seventies and as a construction and demolition debris landfill in the eighties. Changing its land use from agricultural to industrial will allow for development in alliance with the, um, surrounding industrial properties prom- promoting consistency with the area's current land use trends. Um, the next, um, the next strategy focuses more, uh, intensive industrial uses and strategic locations with supporting infrastructure away from residential areas. The subject property, as I mentioned before, it's located just west of Inter- uh, Interstate seventy-six, a major thoroughfare for commerce and heavy traffic. Furthermore, uh, the property is centrally located between the cities of Thornton and Commerce City, and just north of the city and county of Denver, offering an ideal location for the type of business the applicant intends to house on the site. Now, the requested amendment to industrial medium is also consistent with the mobility patterns in the area, given its proximity to high-capacity roads and the fright network, um, in that area of the county. And lastly, this area has gradually transitioned from agricultural and residential uses to more industrial uses, uh, making the proposed change compatible with the site's future vision. The concentration of industrial uses in specific areas away from most residential development and along major transportation routes further supports this vision. Now, for the re-zoning request, the commission needs to review the following criteria for approval. Consistency with the comprehensive plan, as well as the purposes of the land development code, compliance to the zone district standards, and compatibility and harmony with the surrounding area. Now, the proposed re-zoning will change the zoning of the subject property from A-one to I-two. This re-zoning will meet compliance with the development standards, including lot size, width, and setbacks as shown on the screen. Additionally, this re-zoning will be compatible with the surrounding areas as properties directly south and east of the subject property are already zone I-two and are currently used for industrial purposes. The proposed re-zoning and subsequent redevelopment of the site to industrial yard will be in a heavily industrial area close to major transportation routes and near existing industrial sites. Now, as part of this entitlement process, a, a public notice and request for comments was sent to sixty-three residents and property owners within- Now, as part of this entitlement process, uh, a public notice and request for comments was sent to sixty-three residents and property owners within a thousand feet of the subject property. Staff received three public comments, two in the form of letters of support from, for the applicant, and one, um, one, uh, that was discussed with the resident that, um, provided an email as well as a, uh, conversation in person. None of their referral agencies had any comments in opposition to the applicant's request. Now, before I proceed, uh, to the recommendation, it's important to note that because the comprehensive plan amendment required its own vote, staff has divided their recommendation into two separate motions, each requiring its own vote. For the comprehensive plan amendment, uh, this case was heard by the Planning Commission on January nine, twenty twenty-five, where the vote, uh, where the board, uh, voted seven to zero with three findings of fact to approve the comprehensive plan amendment. There were no members of the public, uh, present on that hearing, and there were no commissioner concerns with the, with this proposal. Given the current conditions of the site, as well as the proposed site plan, staff has determined that the, uh, proposal is consistent with the goals, uh, and policies of the Adams County Comprehensive Plan and complies to the zone district standards, uh, and is consistent with the purposes of the Land Development Code, and therefore recommends approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment with three findings of fact. Here are the findings of fact for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Um, and the commissioners also heard, uh, the rezoning portion of this, of this case on January nine, twenty twenty-five, and voted seven to zero with four findings of fact, one condition, and one note to approve the rezoning of the property. Again, no members of the public, uh, were present for the hearing, and there were no commissioners concerned, concerns with this proposal. Therefore, given, uh, current conditions of the site, as well as the proposed site plan, staff has determined that there are adequate facilities and infrastructure to support the proposed development, and the proposal is compatible and harmonious with the surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommends approval of, uh, case PRC twenty twenty-four dash eight with four findings of fact, one condition, and one note. Here are the findings of fact. For the condition of approval, staff recommends no operations or outdoor storage shall take place on the site until a formal permit has been approved. With that, I complete my presentation, but I am available for questions. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Questions from the board? Commissioner Hansen?
Thank you. Just two quick questions. So I see the property is, it has a, there's a ditch. I don't, can't remember the, uh, to the north, on the north side of that. Um, any concerns with contamination or spillage or anything into the ditch, uh, by this, with this use of, this proposed use of the property?
Well, at this time, we did not, uh, review that part of the, um, of the proposal, Commissioner, just due to the fact that this is just for the zoning of the property. However, that will be reviewed at the time of the conditional use permit when a formal engineering review, environmental review will take place of what is proposed on the site.
Okay, great. Then I will, then that's my only question for right now, and then I will, I think my other question is going to be more germane at the next stage. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, would the applicant like to come forward? I don't see any other questions from the board. You would like to come forward and name, state your name and address for the record?
My name is Brett Gibbons. I'm the owner of Gibbons Directors and Crane Rental. My address is six five nine eight North Windmont Avenue in Parker, Colorado. Thank you to all the commissioners for taking the time of your day to discuss the rezoning of seven zero six one East Ninety-sixth Avenue. I would like to thank Brian for such a thorough presentation. I'd also like to thank Shyla and her husband, living next door to the property, for their help and support. Unfortunately, Shyla's son is in the hospital, and she is unable to attend. My father started this company in nineteen eighty-six and purchased his first crane in nineteen ninety-six. He and I have safely built many of the parking garages, schools, stadiums, factories, bridges you pass on a daily basis. Over the last fifteen years, with each rent increase, we have moved our crane yard from Seventy-second N'Dalia to Seventy-fourth Vesquez to where we're currently at, at seven hundred East Ninety-sixth, across the street from the land we're discussing. And last year, our rent increased to two hundred and seventy percent. I'm left with few financially viable options to keep one of the last locally owned crane companies in Colorado, here in Adams County. I unquestionably love the three sixty view of the Front Range at this location. I see the future of my company at seven zero six one East Ninety-sixth Avenue. It may be a vacant landfill, but I know I can build it into something my employees, families, neighbors, and future generations will be delighted to visit. I've learned a lot during this process and have little aspirations of becoming a developer. I'm one small business owner with a great love for the state of Colorado and a desire to stay in Adams County. Thanks again for taking the time to listen to my ambitions for this vacant land, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Questions from the board? Not seeing anything, so thank you so much. You can have a seat. Any members from the public? Would like to speak to this? Seeing none, Commissioner Odoricio? We'll continue on. Any additional applicant, or response from the applicant? We're good. Commissioner, discussion?
Um, okay, I have a question. I, I don't have a question. I'm looking at this, and I just want to make sure because we have been pretty reluctant to add I two to a lot of things as of late, and it's my understanding that, um, and I just want to make it clear because in the future, there, we will have some applications that come forward, and we'll probably face more scrutiny than this, and I want to highlight that I think I can support this. I will support this based on the totality of all the facts and the, uh, that I think that our staff has gone through. And those include, but are not limited to, the impact to the surrounding community, the neighbors', uh, support for this, the, uh, existing, uh, industrial yards next door. Um, the one part that I think we'll watch closely, and I would ask the applicant to be careful of, is the impact both aesthetically as well as environmentally, uh, near those water, um, those water and, uh, um, trail systems. Uh, with that said, you still have a water treatment plant, you have, uh, very similar outdoor storage along here. Um, and I just want to bring that up because at some point, someone in the future will say, well, you approve this one, and I say, we look at each of these on a case-by-case basis, and, uh, it's with the totality of all of this taken together that I believe that it does meet the criteria. And so I will be supporting this, and at that moment, if somebody wants a motion, they can do it. If not, throw it back to me.
Others like to comment?
No, I just would like to echo, I had the same thought process that Commissioner Odoricio outlined and literally had the details up in the, the grid and looking at all the other I two in the area.
Just a couple of comments for staff. Um, I really appreciate, I've not seen before, and if, some of these get to be pretty lengthy, um, not your presentation, but the packet itself, is I really appreciated the current, um, zoning and then what it's, what's being proposed. Um, that was really helpful. Yeah, that was really helpful to see that in the packet and in your presentation. Um, and then I just want to thank Mr. Gibbons for your presence today, um, and for sharing your family's story and the story of your business. I think that that was really heartfelt, and it landed really well here, um, with me, uh, having been a native of Adams County and growing up in the area. So with that, I have a motion and a second. No, I don't.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, PLN twenty twenty-four dash three with three findings of fact.
I'll second. So, real quick, Erica, my, my screen says it's still the Vega's Solar Energy Continuance. Let me go to Activida. Perfect.
There we go.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So Kathy?
It's, oh, my screen, my screen, I, I can't do it. My screen is not, I'm on waiting.
There you go.
There we go. Nope, mine, mine is still not, sorry. My screen is still not.
It says that, our screen reflects that motion by Kathy Hansen, second by Julie Malika. Does anyone else see that?
We see a vote.
I, I can't.
I see a vote.
I can't do anything.
Oh.
My screen is not.
Okay, I can do a voice vote.
Great, thank you, Erica.
Commissioner Hansen?
Yes.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes. So congratulations. Thank you so much for being here.
Excuse me, just for, a, a point of clarification.
There's two.
I just want to clarify and make sure Heidi's okay, that for the record, that was for two, two motions. There's both a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezoning. Do we need to clarify and vote for those separately, or is, or is that sufficient?
So now we do the rezoning.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll move to approve the rezoning of PRC twenty twenty-four dash eight with four findings of fact, one condition, and one note.
Second.
Commissioner Malika?
Yes.
Commissioner Hansen?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinter? Commissioner Odoricio?
Yes.
Commissioner Baca?
Yes. Thank you, Erica. So both of those pass. Congratulations to the Gibbons Group. And with no additional items on our agenda this morning, we are adjourned at ten nineteen AM.